All of these order. We're down among those indigenous communications. Too late, Ms. Smith is going to come back to stand in front of my bed.
Well, good evening. Glad everybody's here. And first thing I would like to do is introduce special guests, two special guests I have here tonight. And Ms. Sarah Watson, right here in the front row. She is the superintendent in Powell County. She is my mentor this year, where it is my first year. And I truly appreciate her. She's already helped me in so many ways. And with her, she has her board chairperson, Ms. Rita Crackery. So I don't want to thank them for having my board meeting. And with that being said, I'm going to get started on our communications. And I have a couple of things to talk about. As a new superintendent, I am evaluated, which I am every year. But this first year, I'm seven different standards. And so what I'm going to be doing is presenting to my board every month, a different standard that I am working on, on a daily basis, you know, just a few things to let them know what I'm doing to show. So the first thing that I have, and this month I have, and you all will appreciate it, is because of the managerial leadership, I chose that one just because when I get to the end, you'll see. So of course, that just talks about being able to manage everything and keep rolling. So the first thing, one of the many things that I have done is reviewed our tax rates for the coming year. I have met with Nikki, which is our finance officer, and discussed our 24-25 budget. I have met with our sheriff and our SROs, along with Christie Sizemore, which is our school safety coordinator. And we've discussed the expectations for this school year. And Ms. Kathy, our director of transportation, we talked about our bus fleet and routes. And bus drivers, there's all kinds of things to talk about when you talk about transportation. And Ms. Dooly, she's our group big service director. And we discussed our food service program. I have gone and eaten lunch with different students. And it was actually nice. A student reached out to me first and invited me to have lunch, so that was nice. And so I've gone to a few of the schools, and so I have done that and met with her and discussed some different, new things maybe to try and let her know exactly, not only about the safe, but what the students' requests are. I have met with Lontte Freeman. She is our preschool coordinator. And we discussed preschool and Head Start. We had been hit this year, a pretty major with our Head Start program. So we've had to adjust and do a bunch of new things there. And but here's where the managerial one sort of hit home, was safety plans. So I had to deal with that a little earlier than usual as far as coming up with new ones. And the mayhem did sort of affect us pretty quickly, and we were close. And so we had to come up with a plan. And I contacted my leadership team, which you know are my coordinators, supervisors, all my principals. And we came up with a plan, and what we thought was best for our students. You know, we did virtual school at first, and then when we felt like it was safe and our kids needed to really get back in school, we came up with a plan. We have had extra police presence, which we are very thankful for. Not only on the inside of our schools, but the outside as well, along our bus routes, extra patrolling. And so the kids have felt safer. I've talked to a couple of the kids. And you know, a lot really don't know what's going on, some do, some don't. So but everybody's been taken to get back in school. And so that is my standards at present. The next thing that I would like to talk about is talenting. This is something that I'm pretty excited about briefly. My secretary is, we have now put all of our job postings online. Before, they were like in a binder in the front office. And we would try to advertise positions on Facebook pages or web pages, just getting them out there, people's personal pages. Because we wondered why, you know, we'd have all these positions open, but we wouldn't have any applicants. So we have worked really hard on this. And so now, immediately on Jackson County Public Schools webpage, and there will be a button. It is not there yet. I'm just going to show you tonight. Is it there now? Okay, right. Employment opportunities, right there. When you see it at the bottom of the page. So you will click on it, and it will open it up. And there on the left, it will tell you all the positions we have open right now. And so when you click on one, it will go and give you, and we don't, like I said, it literally just went live today. So we still have a few little kinks to work out and a lot of the stuff to actually upload, the job descriptions, the pay, things like that. We will get all that put in there. So we are working hard. But you guys go check it out, share it with your friends, your family, anything. We still like for a little bit to try to share it on Facebook, just because we do know that it is the community pretty well. But at least now, you know, classified certified, all the positions that we have in our school system will be posted online. Is that all? Am I going to give the statement now? The board and I also wanted to start recognizing our students. I'm pretty sure they used to do it, and then when COVID came along, COVID sort of messed up everything, as I think everybody knows that. And so we wanted to get back into presenting and recognizing our students. And there's no way we could ever recognize all of them, so we've reached out to all the schools, all the principals. And we've asked, you know, you let us know, because we sure can't thank them or anything. And we're constantly sending out reminders, and we'll see things on Facebook, and we're like, hi, make sure you get this here. You know, the board members will say, hey, don't make sure you don't forget to recognize this. So I think the only one that I'm going to do is Mr. Shear here to do, you're going to do the middle school FBLA round. So I'm going to let you come on in and recognize your people, and I'm going to go through our floor.
We have had the opportunity at Jackson County Middle School to start FBLA as a new chapter last year. And we had resounding success with it. We had over 30 students come to the initial meeting and sign up. We had right at 30 members, which actually made us the second largest middle school chapter in the state of Kentucky. And with that, when we went off to state competition, we took 23 students to compete at state competition. Nine of those qualified for nationals, and four of those attended nationals. Including, we had one student who placed second in the nation, in the entire nation, in the Baya Miller. Chase Shear placed 18th in his competition. And Kaylee Radel placed 21st in her competition. So we had a lot of, a lot of success when you have that many competing, that high 50 people essentially make the nationals. So we finished in the top half of all of the students that were there. So without further ado, I would like to thank you to the board and thank you to Ms. Smith for recognizing us with the, with the flag that we can display in our school. And I would like to present individually certificates of recognition. And before I get to forgetting this, I'd also like to thank the board for helping with the funding and some of the things that we can do to go to our national competition, which was in Orlando, Florida, and a very expensive trip. So I want to thank you all for that. And Mr. Vaughn is here. He was really important for us to get started and getting everything going, from a club level, from fundraising on to everything else. I kind of had to go with him and say, hey, what can we do to get this going? Because it's been a successful program at other schools I've been to as well, and so I decided to bring it to Jackson County as well. All right. Certificate of recognition from the board, Mr. Renee Smith, presented to Neveah Miller. And this trophy is hers as well. This is the second place trophy for nationals, for national competition.
And you can start off if you're on the type of picture.
Kaylee Radel, like I said, she finished 21st in her competition. Delaney's here from Powell County, I'm from Esther County, so it's hard for me not to say Riddle, but I got it. And Chase Shear. We also had Delaney Hayes that finished in the top top five of the nation, and she was at a volleyball tournament. So I will take this for her as well.
Let me get her ready and send you the picture. I'm positive. And I'll be able to say I'm not the best photographer, as my daughter reminds me. Thank you all very much. Now, next. We have our high school girls golf team. So do we have anybody to present for them tonight? No?
So I just want to start by saying that I'm proud of these girls just for stepping out of their comfort zone. Some of them, this is their first year. They went to a match, played golf for a week. That's big when they go up against these teams who have been playing for years. So I just want to start by saying how proud I am of them always showing up and being there and just hanging in there. And I can, since our first golf match or our first practice, there's been so much improvement already, and I can't wait to see where these girls go. We just wish it wasn't Larkin senior year. So they competed in all A region and qualified for state, which was awesome for their first year. And then we took three to state. And with that, they qualified for region, which we will play on Monday, this coming Monday. So my girls that I have with me today are my senior, Ms. Larkin Vaughn. And I have my eighth grader, Ms. Addie Wilson. And my seventh grader, Ms. Remy Bingham. We have two that were unable to attend tonight. One had a family gathering, and that was Kiara Ward. She is a sophomore. And Allison Truitt, also a sophomore. She had a volleyball game tonight. So those are my five that have stuck with me this season. And it's hard to, it's hard to, you have to have four to play as a team. And I've aggravated on the day and said, you've got to be there, you've got to be there, and they have been. So I'm thankful for that, and thankful for the parents who have been there too. So I'm very proud of these girls. Wish us luck on Monday. Also want to recognize our assistant coach, Blake Combs. He's been the knowledge of it all and the...
Thank you all very much. And so then we have Jackson County High School FFA students. Do we have anybody here that's going to recognize me on this? Proud I did. Yes, I'm going to let you actually tell them. I'll pass through that first, so that I don't talk all night. This is just our wire we do every year that highlights some of the success our programs have had and things that have gone on. I could speak, I could lay it all night about our students, all of our students, not just the ones that make their home in the ag room, and how beneficial they are, and they're a cornerstone of our communities. Everybody who, everybody who walks our doors at Jackson County High School, the first few days, they're a little bit nervous. And then slowly but surely, they find a home, whether that's in our CTE programs, or down, down the hallway in the band, or ATC. And students really answer the call when the community needs them. They work extremely hard, as you all know. They stay after school for practice. They manage about half of my students. I could be recognizing here tonight, one of them is next door, learning choreography, being a cheerleader. And a bunch of them are in Harlem County tonight, at a volleyball game. And then I had two or three that text me that couldn't be here because they're now enrolled in college and they take the college classes. So one of them had a meeting with a soil scientist this afternoon. So I said, well, that's a great excuse. I'll take that, but you can't be at the board meeting. But super, super proud. And the students that we're going to recognize tonight, or ones that have had great success this summer. We had students that competed in our conductive chapter meeting team that won first place. That's the first time we've done that in a very long time. Rock Castle County is a very, very hard school to beat, and freshman parliamentary procedure. And those, those kids worked extremely hard, spent many hours inside of the classroom, outside of the classroom to do that. And so they went on to state our parliamentary senior team, our senior team. A lot of those guys are in here tonight, and they're mad at me right now because we're not already doing parlor practice. And I keep coming with that contest isn't till March. They have to, we have to concentrate on other things. So they, they received second place, which the band sent to state, and did really well. I don't usually get feedback from the state FFA advisor when we go. Usually we go, and there's 5,000 FFA members from across the state that are competing in various contests. And we got home, and the next day, I had an email waiting in my inbox from Mr. Collett. And he said, a few notes from convention. And to me, this spoke volumes about our students. He said, first off, your, your conductive chapter meeting team had the best opening and close ceremonies in the state. Now, we didn't win at the state, but to get that compliment coming out of the room, that spoke volumes to me. He said, our parliamentary procedure team liked just a little bit, and they would have been in the run. They worked really hard, and you should be proud of how well they did. And we also had some students that did cert, that, that served that we, they, they helped with registrations. We had students that volunteered to work registration for the state FFA convention. And Mr. Collett's wife said, you know, sent this message and said, your students are fabulous, they're extremely hard workers. And it was a joy to get to work with them. So those type of compliments come from people from places that, in Lexington, Kentucky. And I know those, those guys are from Rock Castle County, but you know, that speaks volumes. Our students take a lot of pride on the name, with the name on the front of their jacket, but they take even more pride in the name on the back of their jacket. And so without further ado, I want to recognize some of their great success tonight. All of them were champions in one way or another. And you know, we competed at state FFA convention, and we just competed at the Kentucky State Fair. Lindsay Gabbard coached our livestock judging team that'll be recognized tonight. She's the newly hired ag teacher. She's going to be here tonight because she had a prior engagement. But she spent a lot of time taking these students out to different farms and stuff and getting them at the fair. So, so we want to recognize each of those. And as a caller, anyone who's going to board at this stage is going to present you with your certificate. And Rowan. Are you sure? Yeah. Haley Jones. Mason Rowan. Austin Carter. And Cameron Carter. Remington Bingham. Serenity Bingham. Katie Bowles. Aiden Wires. And I'm going to brag on this bunch. Larkin was part of this bunch too, before we called her up here. So these guys participated in land judging, fell short of going to nationals this year, but that's okay. We're going to get back to work for October. Our livestock team placed second in the state. Our national land judging team placed top 18 out of 109. And Anna Rowan was just one or two boxes away from, from making it into the top 10 nationally. So that was amazing. Mason Rowan was a regional job employment skills winner. And in that process, you do a resume, a cover letter, and three rounds of interviews. And so he did really, really well. Just represents our parlor team, our conductive chapter meeting teams, our state livestock judging team, that did place this year at the state contest. And placing top 10 at the state livestock contest, we might as well say we got second, because those guys have been doing it since they were nine, and we put a 10 together this year. So these, these guys worked extremely hard. And then the last person we recognized is our state champion in agriculture, public speaking, and that's Larkin Vaughn. We're going to present her tonight with a banner that's going to hang up in our school, in the hallway there, at the gym, and then also with her certificate. So Larkin was our state agricultural public speaking winner in nursery and landscape.
But these guys, like I said, they showed great leadership. We're extremely proud of them. And I like Mr. Shear is very proud of his students. Our CTE programs are, are really a heart of our community. And they do a lot of volunteer service hours, as long, as well as they're high, hold high academic standards. And so we're, we're really, really proud of the hard work that they do and hope that it carries forward in the future. Congratulations.
I'm going to give you, here the absent, if you just want to leave before you leave. And yes, if there's anybody that would like to leave, because we know students usually don't ever want to see you guys through all this business, you're welcome to, but if you want to, you're welcome to, so.
Before we get started, I want to amend all the right folks that have Jackson County Fire, the Department of Fire and消防局 Association, sir, please. Highly, highly satisfied these kids have been hard work on the community. In the case of either, next time, it's approved, or appeals, or claims, need a motion?
Second.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson. Item four, approval of the rules from August 2024, regular board is in, there's a motion?
Second.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson. Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Item five, approval of the 2024, 2025 working budget, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hyson, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Item six, approval to amend the 2024, 2025 school calendar, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.
Item seven, approval of amendment of understanding between departments for the real impact of the Jackson County Department of Education. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson. Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Item eight, approval of the second reading of the classified employee hiring process. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Item nine, approval to establish and reestablish positions, need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.
Item 10, approval of field trips, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Item 11, approval of funding, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.
Item 12, for public comment. We have one person to sign in. Joshua Clark, would you like to speak with us?
Yeah, I have a prepared statement, but I don't think I'm going to go into all of it. I was, I think just, given what we've encountered on social media, I expected there to be a lot more people here today and a lot more anger. But that doesn't seem to be the case. So I mean, I guess, is this a conversation, or is this just me making a statement?
It's really, it's really you making a statement from those board.
It is. Well, I mean, just since I'm before the board, can I ask, do you guys feel like religious liberty has been stripped from this community? As a part of the Ten Commandments coming down?
I will tell you that legal counsel, I'm going to advise them probably not to.
Okay.
To get to that conversation.
All right.
Nothing personal, Mr. Clark, just, I think it's, I think it's better if we don't.
Sure, okay. Then I guess if that's the case, I probably should make my statement in full. So good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Joshua Clark, and I am the person responsible for the notification that led to the removal of the Ten Commandments from our schools. I thought it was interesting that this kind of fell on Constitution Day. Because, I mean, earnestly, that was my only intent. I did not seek this out to anger people, to polarize the community. I understood immediately after I admitted to it on social media what was going to happen. But, I mean, first and foremost, it's really not an issue of whether we should put them back. That, that seems to be the question among the community on social media. And I would just put it to the board here, that the real issue is they shouldn't have been there in the first place. Because, I mean, this issue didn't begin with me. This has been really a battle that's been waged since the 1980s, when Stone V. Graham decisively struck down the Kentucky law that sought to have those Ten Commandments posted in school classrooms across our state. The religious community has repeatedly tried to reintroduce them ever since. This is really just a continuation of that decades-long debate. Our founders, many of whom were deeply religious, were absolutely clear in their intent... Our founders, many of whom were deeply religious, were absolutely clear in their intent to keep religion separate from government. In seventeen ninety-seven, in the Treaty of Tripoli, Article eleven starts with, "The government of the United States is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion." This foundational declaration was meant to convey that government stood wholly apart from religious doctrine. In Stone B. Graham, the Supreme Court ruled, "If the posted copies of the Ten Commandments are to have any effect at all, it will be to induce schoolchildren to read, meditate upon, perhaps to venerate and obey the commandments." However desirable this might be as a matter of private devotion, it is not a permissible state objective under the Establishment Clause. This ruling remains in effect today, and was reaffirmed in the Cremoni County v. ACLU in two thousand and five. The court also applied the Lemon test in that case, concluding that the Ten Commandments lacked any secular purpose in our schools. Some have attempted to reframe the Ten Commandments as historical artifacts, which many people are suggesting is them in this case. And it just seems to me that that tactic would be absolutely dishonest. It, it, it betrays the very integrity of the faith that seeks to promote by really peddling religion under false pretenses. True religious expression in public institutions should be personal and voluntary, and, and we've seen that with educators volunteering to lead prayer before and after school, and that's, I mean, that's something that's perfectly legal and something that we can celebrate. And I'm told that kids are wearing the Ten Commandments on their, in mass in, in schools, and, and those are also perfectly legal and can be celebrated. Something I, I took away from the superintendent and the board's statement was that these legal challenges are something that we would expect to come from California. As if this were something alien, some outside agenda that's imposed upon us. But again, this battle was fought here in Kentucky in the eighties, and again in the two thousands, and it continues today. This is not an outside threat. It's about upholding our constitutional precepts, no matter where you are. Some in the community have responded with vitriol, suggesting that despite living here for nearly a decade, that we should go back to California. This, this sentiment has almost been tacitly endorsed by the board in a way, because we're saying that these are the kind of legal threats we see from California. And I am from California, I, I doubt the board knew that before they issued the statement. I, I certainly hope you didn't. But we are part of this community now, I've volunteered in the community. I've been here for almost a decade. A local podcaster has gone so far as to label me public enemy number one and an infiltrator. And, and this is not a fringe feature, I mean, this, this podcaster has three thousand followers, most of them are Jackson Countyans and the surrounding area. I've been boxed online, people have shared my address. My daughter's photo has been passed around on Instagram with incite nets to violence. And I think we're fortunate that I was a single case, but still, I mean, it significantly impacts our sense of security in our community. Sorry. All right, I mean, this podcast host also recently had two high school students on his podcast in support of having these commandments put back up. And, and one of these students remarked that just upon hearing another student in the hallway say that it wasn't a big deal, that they remarked, they almost cussed them out, and then another student explained, that's why you're a lesbian. And, and this is what's being said on this podcast. This is exactly, I think, what happens when we fail to engage with ideas thoughtfully and instead resort to mob-like reactions and other. And I'm not saying that the board condones this, I'm certain you would be against it. It just happens to be, you know, that, that California statement carries a lot of weight when the community realizes that and latches on to it. And then they're telling us constantly, we need to get the heck out of here and go back to where we came from. And also, since I brought this issue forward, other people have contacted me with a history of other breaches in the district. Teachers have offered to segregate children who do not participate in Jesus time, which wasn't a part of the Bible release program. I've seen video recordings of Zoom classrooms turned into de facto church services. Other people remarking that they just had to leave the district after they brought some of these things to life. Scripture and religious teachings are displayed in classrooms, offices, libraries. I mean, when, when I walked through for the open house night, it was just very common throughout all, all areas where I could see. And again, this issue, it just seems to go far beyond the Ten Commandments. I understand I'm in a religious community, but it's, in our schools, absolutely pervasive. And, and again, other people have just messaged me with words of support of, thank you for giving a voice to concerns that I had, but I was afraid, obviously, to give voice to those concerns for the community reaction. Interestingly, on that same podcast, they did a poll to see how many people supported the removal of the Ten Commandments, and ten percent of the respondents favored their removal. And that, that just tells me that there's definitely a minority who is not being heard or is afraid to speak out on these things. I, I mean, this ten percent is precisely one of the groups that the Establishment Clause exists to protect. And it just, it seems, you know, I, I had originally just asked that, that this issue was addressed thoughtfully and thoroughly. And it, it seemed to be that the board's statement was really a deflection of, this is an outside thing that has come into our community. And again, I, I, it just, I'm sure it was happenstance that I'm from California, and we're saying this is the kind of stuff we see from California. But it doesn't help the community reaction when they find out I'm from California, and it's like, you need to get out of here. So I, I guess that's more or less my statement. If the board has no questions, or is advised against answering any, I thank you for your time.
Item thirteen, approval to adjourn, need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nicholson.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Hyson.
Yes.